Good evening. I will call the November fourteenth Cedar Springs Public Schools School Board Meeting to Order. It is now six forty-five, so if you would rise and join me within pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic.
Thank you. And if we can have a roll call, please, Secretary Slager.
Yes, Trustee Bowser.
Here.
Trustee Revard.
Here.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager.
Here.
Vice President Shoffner.
Here.
President Reed.
Here. Thank you. We have established a full forum. And next on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. And I would accept a motion for as presented, except for under action. We would be removing Action Item A, student discipline that was unnecessary. So I would entertain a motion.
So, support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed. Yes. The agenda is adopted. That brings us to gratitudes. And we're open for sharing from the board.
I had a really fun time going to the school play this weekend. I think they did a great job. It was, I thought it was really cool the way they didn't use props so much. So when they decided to drive, they just kind of did this and walked, which was cool. So that was super fun. So I am grateful that we have a program that allows students to enjoy the arts.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Grateful for all the hard work and stuff.
So I attended the, okay, help me out Ron, Career College Life Readiness. And that was very nice, first time, and well-attended, I thought. And what I'm really grateful for is at lunchtime, one of the other vendors or businesses asked, what is new beginnings? And the two students at our table explained it with such empathy and caring and really knew what, how it helped the kids. So that was very nice.
That reminded me of another one.
Okay.
I'm thankful for the way they do October with the seniors at high school. And we've been bugging our kids to our oldest, no, our oldest in high school, to get cracking on applying to colleges and they were dragging their feet. And finally, they were at school and they applied to some places, so. Thank you, school, for helping us out.
I've got one of those. Thank you, school, for helping me out. Get it.
Yeah, I'm grateful for the fact that we didn't have to call a snow day today despite the heavy snows that we received during the weekend. And I don't want to steal Ron's thunder because he's going to do some sharing, but just that whole experience on a Friday morning for our high school students was very special. And yeah, it's just something that is only going to gain momentum in mode or ways over time. Without stealing.
All right, thank you. And high school representatives, do you have, okay. If you want, come to the podium. And what is your name?
My name is, I'm a merit, I'm a junior in the high school.
Okay.
Uh, that's.
Go ahead.
Uh, we, we, yeah, we have just been working on holiday hallway decorating, which will happen, I believe, the week before we go on to the break. And we're basically doing Christmas movies for each of the hallways, stuff like Elf, The Grinch, et cetera. And the junior council has been beginning to plan for prom. We just started talking about that. And that's basically all we have to at this point after homecoming and all that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now you have to sit through the rest of the meeting. Just kidding.
All right. Next up on our agenda is our consent items, and I will entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed. Yes, consent items are approved as presented. And beginning our discussion items, first up, we have our audit report. And we have Mr. Hap, we have Mr. Hap from a partner at Rite of L Partner. Or it's muddy.
So originally, we thought we had a disciplinary hearing, so we asked him to be here at seven fifteen. We gave him that option. So I just, I emailed him about forty minutes ago, letting him know that that has been removed from the agenda. And if he can make it, we would plug him in now, so.
Okay, so.
So as of now, I assume he'll be here at seven fifteen.
Okay. All right, so you give us the high sign. One here, so we don't. Okay, so moving on then to the financial update.
All right, I think we'll be pretty heavy on financial stuff today this for me, so I'll be pretty brief with my presentation. But a couple of things I wanted to highlight on the finance report. I think the biggest thing that we need to be aware of is the fall count. It's still unaudited, but right now, our numbers are down one hundred and twenty-eight FTEs from last October. So that's a pretty significant decrease in our enrollments. We did anticipate twenty-five of those related to the RITZ program moving from Cedar Springs to the ISD. So we knew that was going to be part of that. We also anticipated somewhat smaller kindergarten class. But as you recall, I projected that we would be down approximately fifty FTEs. So we are seventy-eight more than that, so at one hundred and twenty-eight. So that's something we do need to keep an eye on. Obviously, we're funded per pupils. So I am still going through working on Budget Amendment One. And my hope is to present Budget Amendment One to the board either at the December board meeting or the first meeting in January. With those numbers, I'll just be frank that the Budget Amendment One will look significantly different than what was presented in June. Obviously, because of that, but also there, there are some additional funding opportunities that have been made available to us since the budget was adopted back in June. So something we definitely have to keep an eye on. You know, rough estimate, we're about down four hundred FTEs from two thousand and twenty. And if you factor in what we had anticipated enrollment doing, we might be down six, five or six hundred. So it is a pretty sizable decrease. Another thing to keep on your radar is I have presented the post-schedule events for the Series Two bond issuance. We moved that, I moved that up about a month. Originally, they had, we were anticipating a bond sale closing in late April, early May. Based on the cash flow projections, I had them move that up about a month. So we can meet our cash flow requirements and continue the construction projects.
Does that, does that mean that the construction is ahead of schedule? Or does that mean that we need more money now for what we've got scheduled?
The construction has moved faster than anticipated, than their original. So at the beginning of each project, they do a cash flow projection. So we have moved faster than what was originally projected. Also, prior to Chris leaving and myself starting, Chris invested some of the funds in some US Treasury bonds to try to capture a higher rate of return. Those bonds will become, become mature in April, May, June of twenty-three. So, but we're locked in. I mean, we could, we could sell them, but we would lose right now approximately a hundred thousand dollars. So combination of the cash going out has been a little bit faster than the original cash flow projections. And we have some of our funds are kind of tied in, tied up in investments. I felt we can move that up a little bit to alleviate that stress. Any, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have proposed high school courses with Jen Haberly.
Absolutely, and I do have some friends here from the high school to share as well. We have several different courses on the docket for next fall. One of them is a law and justice course at the high school level. And then we have some reconfiguration of our PE department in terms of the names of courses and prerequisites that will be available. So an overview, an overhaul of a department at the high school level to mirror what's been happening at the middle level. So I'd like to ask Joe Teskary from our high school to come on up and talk to you a bit about the law and justice proposals so that you have a chance to ask any questions you might have about this elective course.
Thank you all. My name is Joe Teskary. Students usually call me Coach T. I'm a social studies at the high school. You may hear a slight sort of drawl. I'm originally from North Carolina, my first year at Cedar Springs. I would like to note something that superintendent said earlier about the amount of stuff that we had. Okay, I saw no precipitation, but it was like at least three days. So I'll be brief, but we put in the paperwork and all the cross the Ts, dot the Is, nor the Gs, Js. We propose a law and justice course for Cedar Springs title. This is a nationally recognized social studies elective. And this is something that I had the privilege of starting and really doubling our whole mix when I taught at a local high school down in North Carolina. And so when I look at a law and justice curriculum, right, you say, well, Christian, why in the world would we need a law and justice course in there? Well, there's three ways to look at it, right? The first thing is content. We really have an absence of legal jurisprudence or looking at a legal system in the United States and Social Studies Department. We touch on a little bit with government, but that's it, right? Beyond that, it's really something that since we have this goal of being the number one holistic school for students within the state of Michigan, we really need to be more student-centered. And I think one way to do that is to really look into what students are interested in and having that drive curriculum, having that drive content, so on and so forth. A lot of students are interested in working in the legal profession, whether it be Department of Corrections, law enforcement, prosecutor, defense attorney, you name it, right? And these aren't like low-dollar salary items either, right? But lots of them are interested in it and they want to learn more about it and maybe persons may have it. A lot of students just love watching Law &amp; Order, right? Hey, that's okay too, right? You know, it's like, hey, you know what? Love the True Crime Podcast, Coach T. I'd like to learn more about this stuff. Some kids take this class and not even know they're interested in it until later on, they start to develop more marketable skills, right? During my time in North Carolina, I was able to really make a lot of relationships in connection with our local community with that in mind. At a little, almost like a job fair to a certain extent where we had judges come in, people from the SBI, people from local law enforcement. We had guest speakers all the time, right? And really what the students were interested in really drove what we did throughout that semester and really gave me ideas, okay, I need to have these people in my classroom. And from there, I've been through that celebration with them to say, hey, you know what? I really appreciate you coming to like judges, judges, so on. Can you come back to help us out with our job fair in spring? Right? So really establishing relationships between our school and our community, which I think is so part, or so important, especially for a public school. Now with that, you really start to look into that community piece, right? So that's really the second big thing, is that we want to establish interests. We want to establish avenues for participants at festival beyond graduation. So when they leave these doors, we know that they're in a good spot, right? Really establishing those relationships with our communities and members of those communities. So kind of using my focus, which is law and justice, they have those connections to say, hey, thank you so much for helping us out. Will you come back? Right? And really having that customer service mentality. And then finally, the last thing, really focusing on critical thinking, right? There's a lot of things within the law and justice curriculum that really complements a lot of our other curriculum. And there's not a lot of time that we, especially in high school curriculum, where we emphasize critical thinking, right? There's not always going to be a right or wrong answer. We want to be able to provide students with the skills necessary to be able to make investments, to be able to evaluate information and then use their brains collaborating with their peers. You will come from the role. Right? That's something I really like to focus on in my law justice curriculum. And that, what I, my observations have really emphasized a lot of those skills and attributes of these other classes. Now, I would, I did provide a syllabus. This is just example one that I've used in the past. But that provides benchmarks and really a lot of those critical skills and attributes that we emphasize in the curriculum. And that's hopefully something that we take time to grow throughout the semester or throughout the school. So that's, that's my spiel, right, from what I does. What questions do you have?
So is the book that's being proposed, the book that you've used before, so you're familiar with it?
Yes. And that's something that's been developed through, I want to say, University of Washington Law School. And so that's also a partner that we use quite a bit in the past. When I was down south, we also partnered with Campbell Law School, and they provided a lot of resources to us as well. So it's not totally inclusive. I think the book is really good, provides a lot of good content. It appears kind of what we do a lot, but also like use a lot of other resources as well.
So I think this is great. I love the idea. Have you had a lot of interest from students? Have you loaded this by any?
A little bit. Yeah, I talked to a few students that I've had, and I've had a few that have said, you know, Christian, I kind of want to explore the legal field one day, kind of want to be a lawyer. I just don't know much about that, you know, that, that realm. So it's like, hey, you know what? Hey, sign up for Law and Justice Act. All right. And so I think that's just kind of one of the big drivers for the course is that people are just either interested in the content or want to utilize that to learn more, to develop the, the skill long-term for future career.
Great.
Following up on his question, I think I read somewhere you're estimating thirty students in the fall of next year. Did I read that somewhere?
Could be.
How do you determine that number? How do you, how do you measure that interest if, if we haven't done some sort of survey without students?
Well, I think that it's just more towards like a student services, like counseling question.
Okay.
I think we have to be able to determine a teacher for like social studies. And if we have enough class period times during the day to be able to operate it. In the past, I would have about thirty, thirty-six per class. At the very beginning, it was about thirty-six per semester. By the time I left, it was about a five-year span that went from thirty a semester to like eighty a semester.
And then do you see this as the beginning of something? Are there other classes that you would see adding in the fall of twenty-four to, to use this as a prerequisite towards the next thing?
Potentially, potentially. I mean, it's kind of, we want to kind of lay the groundwork first. When I first started in North Carolina teaching law and justice, it was, it was very small. And then we grew the program. And then eventually, one thing I was really starting to emphasize more was leadership and having a big department in the school, right? And so we actually partnered with Campbell Law, who came in to teach our class about juvenile law, restorative justice. And then they wanted to use us as a pilot program to be able to expand that, to have our student leaders, those are big law and justice people, to have, it was a restorative practice to be able to solve a lot of the very low-level services. Unfortunately, I got COVID, but I was, we were very privileged, I guess, to have had the opportunity and to be able to be recognized through Campbell Law in that way.
And I, I asked him because you kind of brought it up, students talking about, I like to watch Law &amp; Order. I, you know, so forensic sciences and these kind of things are all involved with.
True. And we did offer forensic sciences, a science elective down south. And that was one thing we were able to do as partner, maybe we have a lot of cross-curricular collaborators. It's a lovely, it's all about the same student taking the same class.
Thank you for your presentation.
So I have a question too. It looks like you're going to delve a little bit into the First Amendment. Do you dig deeper into the Constitution as a whole, as part of the foundation of that class, or the Bill of Rights as kind of the foundation of law? Or do you just focus on that First Amendment?
Well, we focus on the entire Bill of Rights. Now, that is something that we spend a lot of time on inside each government as well. It's also an entire unit on constitutional law and justice, right? Now, when it comes to law and justice, we spent a lot of time focusing on Amendments Four through Eight because they mainly pertain to legal rights. Now, we will delve into constitutional a little bit, especially with the First Amendment, Second Amendment, all the way to the end, right? Because we'll, we'll cover everything, the legal sphere, right? But mainly looking at Four through Eight and determining when those have become into question in front of the Supreme Court, what the decision has been and how that's evolved, especially with the app and the social media.
Thank you.
Just a comment. I mean, I, I think it sounds great too. I'm, I'm excited about it. And I don't, I don't know that much about the programs at KCTC, but I know they have a criminology and forensics. And I don't know if you've been in communication with them at all, but I'm kind of curious what overlap there is there.
That's something we talked about a little bit, just kind of small group. And I do have a lot of students that have signed up for classes like that. I think those are very specific. I know I have a lot of, a few students have signed up for their law and corporate training program. And so I think this is something that complement that as well.
Yeah. Great.
Thank you. We'll also come on just with this, since you know, this information.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And then we also have a whole series of adjustments to our PVE offerings. And I have Derek Ash here to speak about the overview of the.
My name is Derek Ash. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about these polls. Really excited about it. I'm a born and raised Red Hawk. Found my way back into the classroom and I noticed early on that we're offering the same type of courses that were offered here. And I took those classes ten years ago. So biggest reason for change in these courses is to allow some more opportunity for our students, give them more student choice. And then also something I'm really passionate about is applying the tools of physical fitness and lifetime physical fitness to improve mental health. So I know this quite a bit in my classes that I've had. I teach strength and conditioning in high school. I teach a few of the middle school classes as well. But one huge success story that I'd like to share from my strength and conditioning classes, there's a student I had who was, he was a little bit overweight to start the school year. He's lost over twenty-five pounds. His mental health has gone through the roof and he's got confidence to go and try out for two other sports. So super proud of that. But the three new classes, I guess they're not new, but we're just changing some of the names. Strength and conditioning, it was currently called conditioning and weight training. So we just changed the name and then we dropped a prerequisite. The biggest reason for that is by not allowing freshmen into that course. I feel like it's, it really hurts the number by not letting them even have a choice to take the class. And that goes for lifetime fitness, which is currently kind of like cross-training and lifetime activities. But that would be more focused on, you know, students going and coming into classes and finding things they might enjoy outside of, you know, maybe the weight room or cardio things like, you know, pickleball or badminton or even something like, you know, walking. And then team sports is currently not a class, but it's a class in a lot of our, a lot of schools close by. That would be more for the kids that, you know, I, I like to be active, but I really like to compete and just play different games. I like to try a different, a different thing, a few different things. So those would be the, the recommendations. And then I would like to open them up all nine through twelve to really try to increase our numbers and just but which have been on the rise the last, I would say, half a year. Questions on the courses?
I just have one of these courses, they focus on movement, right? They don't, you're not going to talk about like diets and stuff.
Um, correct. I knew with my conditioning and weight training class, I, I do have some nutritional certification as well. So with a lot of my more advanced students, I do dive into like, you know, why or how we're going to fuel the body and exactly what you need to fuel workouts with some of them, you know, we can go through and I'll show them how to calculate their basal metabolic rate. And that helps them figure out how many calories they need per day as further aged. And then from there, we kind of go into, you know, the macronutrients. And so if the kids, you know, have interest in it, I dive a little bit more into that topic. I know our current food nutrition class talks about it a little bit, so I try to stay out of that realm. But I do try, like to try to give them a little bit of information on sport nutrition, how to fuel the body for a workout.
Thank you.
So how many strength and conditioning student would you expect to have in the class?
So the number has grown. I don't know the exact amount, but I know we only offered one class last fall. And I currently teach two classes of over thirty-five. And I have another, I have three classes in the spring with enrollment going up. And then I do offer a couple others in session, but.
So if you're doing strength and conditioning, they're all at a different level, right? So how is it that you're able to, you know, successfully maneuver thirty-five people all at different levels?
Yeah, so just like in any classroom, differentiation of students. So I differentiate by their age, their ability, but I also do it in-season versus off-season. So I found that to be super successful for our business past fall. If I'm in a sport, I'm working in this group in this location. And if I'm not in a sport currently, I'm working in this group. It just allows me to monitor those students a little bit more. So luckily, moving the weight room into where it's currently at allows me more space, so it allows me to have more kids in there.
And then I would just compliment the team sport class. To me, that's, there's probably a lot of students who don't want to play on one of the major sports teams, but being on a team is a huge deal in life. And I think that goes much further than just physical education, so.
Yeah. And they never know like what they might find interesting. Sure. So, you know, more exposure to different things, though. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did I wind it up last one and then I wind it up? Yep. All right. So the last time we were together, we looked at the, a text for Introduction to Livestock and Companion Animals for one of our agricultural science courses. So this is just another look at that and the digital access, so that you are welcome to peruse the entire resource if you would enjoy doing it. There is also a digital resource for the law and justice proposal there that you are welcome to peruse as well. And we have both of those chat sets displayed down in my office for anyone who would care to see them in person as well. Those will be there for at least thirty days.
Any questions?
Thanks.
Right, so next, let's jump back up to discussion item A for our audit report. We have Mr. Hapner who's joining. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Peter Hapner. I represent Rite of L Hapner, the firm of certified public attorneys that conducted your audit for the year ended June thirty of two thousand and twenty-two. And I'm here answering questions on this document. And I also wanted to point out a few highlights, if, if I may.
Please do.
You may.
So the document itself is quite fast, and the front of the report provides management's discussion and analysis. And then the basic financial statements. But I'm going to ask you to turn with me if you are so inclined to the back of the report as there's a nice summary that is provided to the federal audit clearing analysis, page sixty-three. Through the back of the report, as there's a nice summary that is provided to the federal audit clearing analysis on page sixty-three. And this provides a nice summary of the three opinions that we provide on. Uh, provide for purposes of your report, so we provide an opinion on the financial statement, which are at the front of the report. Um, and that's what I would refer to on page sixty-three at the top as an unmodified opinion. It's our opinion that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position of. The governmental activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining funds in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Our opinion is on page one of the financial statements and we'll get there, but I'm going to go through this summary first. Um, and that's what I would refer to as a clean opinion, the opinion I would like to have when I'm sitting on a board. Um, in addition, we conducted your audit in accordance with government auditing standards. Uh, and that is required when you receive federal financial assistance in excess of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So you did, and so we conducted your audit in accordance with federal accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and we provide an opinion. Um, for purposes of government auditing standards and it proceeds your schedule of expenditure of federal awards. And again, it's within this data at the back of the report and, uh. That report on internal controls, we identified no material weaknesses, no significant efficiencies. Um, and no non-compliance material to the financial statements, and that's what I would refer to as a clean opinion as well. Um, and in addition to our report on this financial information, we have that internal controls and. Report and then we also have a report on your compliance with federal audit referred with grant requirements. So that third opinion is summarized on page sixty-three as well. Where we have federal awards about ninety-one thousand on the page. And for purposes of your compliance with federal grant requirements. We identified no material weaknesses, no significant efficiencies or other items that we need to bring to the attention of the federal government. So that's, uh, three opinions. Kind of a clean sweep of, uh, unmodified opinion on the financial statements, no issues on internal controls identified, no issues on. Uh, federal compliance identified, we audited the education stabilization. Funding as well as the special education cluster for purposes of that federal compliance audit referred to, that's a single one at oftentimes. And so those three opinions are approximately six pages long across them, that's a nice summary of what, what they are, uh, referring to. And I'm happy to look at any of the individual opinions, but I thought if I just pointed out a couple of highlights as well. Um, so I would ask you to turn with me. The page six. So, providing an opinion proceeding, page six, that's our opinion on the financial statements. And beginning on page six is management's discussion and analysis, and I thought. Um, as a review partner, I reviewed all of the report itself and some of the work papers. I thought this is a nice consent, uh, kind of scene. Uh, description of what happened during the current year from the perspective of additional funding, favorable averaging of student count. Additional federal funding, so, um. Marty did a nice job of providing that summary and that's what I would bring to the attention of this management's discussion and analysis. To someone who is interested in the audit and financial statements, because it provides a nice summary. There's definitely detail in there. Um, following page six, if you take a look at food settle, I did want to point out. Um, this is big picture full accrual accounting, so this is the business perspective of your financial position, including all of your assets, all of your liabilities. And if you think a look at net position at the top of the page, bottom line of the first table. You'll see your netted position increased by ten million dollars, I just wanted to point out that's. Largely due to the fact that you had an improvement in fund balance in your general fund. But also it's very susceptible to rate of return on the other post-employment and pension plan that you participate with in. So you get a share of the entire school pension plan across the entire state and public schools. And when that market value fluctuates or they change to something that really drives this number. So, but I wanted to point out what it actually was. When we start looking at the fund statements, you'll see you did well, um, but not ten million dollars well. Following that on page eight is a picture at the bottom of the page, displaying your capital assets for the current year. And on page nine. Your long-term liabilities, to a large extent, had financed those capital assets, so they're approximately the same balance. And then on page nine, you'll see on that, the, uh, table at the very top, last two, last. Three from the last and two from the last line, you will see those are the big numbers that come from that pension and O P A plan. And when market values change, those things swing quite a lot all around. But I wanted to give you kind of a big picture, full accrual, all your assets, all your liabilities, where did you end up the year? And then I take you to page fourteen. And these are your project financial statements. This is the modified activity basis accounting, so we were looking at your current assets and your current liabilities. This financial statement is following the flow of current financial resources measurement, it's not the business perspective. But more current things in current out, ended with a solid ending fund balance. Um, eleven point four million dollars in your general fund. And then you have some activity that's reported, you need this further. Page sixteen where we can see what dollars came in and what dollars went out. On page sixteen, your general fund had forty-three million dollars worth of revenues. Forty-three million dollars worth of expenditures. So insurance recoveries and ended the year with a positive change in fund balance in the first column on page sixteen. And then we have your twenty-one building bond and site activity, you can see you invested approximately thirteen million dollars in additional capital for the district. In the second column, and then all of the other activity of the district is displayed in that third column. And it just showed, uh, basically your food service, student activities, many bond and debt service funds all rolled up. The big funds show up in the front of the report, those smaller funds are in the back of the report. Um, but again, and so you'll see in that second column, you actually have a reduction in the bottom line of thirteen million dollars. As a result of issuing bonds in one year and using those bonds to do the projects in the following year. Same thing used in general, but now we're operating. Ended with a strong financial position and that bodes well for who knows what comes next down the line. Right, um, following the financial statements, and I'm hitting on the highlight, are a lot of notes. There's probably eight pages of notes just related to your pension and other post-employment and that of it. Um, but detail of how did the assets, the fixed assets change during the current year, what occurred with the debt, you made your debt service payments, et cetera, et cetera. Um. I think the, uh, audit process went fine, there were some changes in people, so that delayed things a bit. Um, and, and illnesses and things of that nature, but from our perspective, um, our. Clean opinion across all, all of the, uh, three opinions that we have and, uh. Um, enjoyed working with your staff and I talked to the folks that were out here for the fieldwork and. There wasn't something to bring to your attention. Are there questions I can answer about the audit, the process, where you landed? Or where you plan to be in the happening?
I, I have a question or two regarding internal controls, now you lay out here several times that you're not judging the internal controls, you're just assuring that they meet the standard.
Right.
And they provide the results that we're trying to achieve.
Sure.
During discussions with Marty, were, were there, are there discussions regarding the controls and perhaps this might be better or perhaps you're. And so on and so forth, or you don't even go to any ones?
We specifically talk with our clients periodically throughout the year, some process is changing or some new funding or there are some new requirements. Um, and so there's definitely discussing, now if. In that, our report on internal control, we would identify a significant deficiency or a material weakness. We also provide communications to the board in the form of a letter that talks about our responsibilities and your responsibility. That's where we would bring something to your attention like you should change your internal controls. That isn't a significant deficiency or a material weakness and the actual letter itself, um, doesn't identify any. Um, that doesn't mean that, so typically when I'm working on a lot of, I will share things with management, like a finance director, business manager, or what have you. But they're usually not significant enough to even write down the issue. So when I have something to share with you, I would put it in this letter or a big problem, it would be identified as an issue in those other things. Does that help?
It does, yep, thank you. I have one other question if I may.
Sure, sure.
Uh, on page twenty-eight, top paragraph, deposit risk. Um, and page, page twenty-eight, the top paragraph. As of year end, three point five million of the district's bank balance was exposed to custodial credit risk, because uninsured and uncollateralized. Is that a standard statement that is in a, a audit for a school?
I would say yes, in a school and then any government in Michigan. Um, there are states where they, the state government has required that, uh, government entities have a hundred percent of their deposits with F D I C insured. Banks, either insured or collateralized. And so maybe they'll buy twenty different CDs from twenty banks to start stacking up the F D I C or you start paying basis points. To, uh, have your, your deposits collateralized. Um, but in Michigan, uh, I don't know that I work with a school that actually collateralizes. Um, I do work with a, a couple counties that take some action in that area, they're, they're probably taking hundreds of millions of dollars. Um, but yes, very typical statement, but it is just a thought that if you have more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, earning interest at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars not earning interest at one bank, that would not be insured. But yeah, comment.
Okay, very good. And of course, we're investing in the highest grade, I, I think we'll probably require you to, correct, our baskets have to be very high grades, so the. The risk of actually losing this is very, very, very slim.
Right, I don't measure how likely it is of losing it, but historically I haven't seen it occur.
Okay.
Um, doesn't mean it, it couldn't, um. Uh, you qualify your banks and Michigan State law only allows you to invest in certain, certain things. But then these are really just deposits collateralized.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Have you ever seen a school where they have in their bank where they have, um, not necessarily the CDs, but like the sweep accounts? Where they do have the funds in, um.
Over and I agree purchase and greater than something like?
Well, are there other, um, not their, their front of bank, but they're, they work in a group of banks.
Oh, sure.
So they space out the money, so it's all, um, F D I C insured.
Yeah, uh, I, I don't see schools doing that typically, what I see is, uh. Units of governments like this, towns, cities, cities, things of that nature. Um, they may go through a program and they named for it was CDers, where you could basically buy, go through one bank and get. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollar CDs at multiple banks. State provided for that for local government, but I don't know of a school that we work with that has done that. Uh, in some extent, schools' cash flow is, you know, you're not necessarily investing for quite a long term because it's kind of cyclical.
And then Marty, I'll just say, you know, congratulations, this is a great audit report, I mean, fantastic. One question I would ask, it's kind of similar, I think, to, uh, to one you've been asked already, but was there anything, I guess, in terms of, uh. Oversight that you would recommend, obviously it's not anything you felt you needed to report to us, but was there anything you were able to, I mean, obviously did a fantastic job, I mean, with, with this audit finding, but. Was not finding, but report, was there anything that you would say, you know, to, to strengthen it just a little bit more, there is something that we could do?
I, I don't know that I would say that, I looked at the adjustments and things of that nature as well, I was pretty cleaned out.
Yeah.
That's great when you aren't, uh, when you're newer on the scene. It's a, a, a big handful just to understand what's occurring and how were they accounting for things or things of that nature, but oh, I don't have that brain.
Alright, fantastic, Marty, that sounds like an A plus, nice job.
Thank you. I think, uh, business off theme. They obviously play really a large part in this clean audit, man himself with our Natalie, Carrie and. Amy. They all received a lot of credit for this as well.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us.
You're welcome, thank you.
We are at the call twenty twenty-three, Neola Board of Education policy updates.
So I think this is our third look at this collection of, uh, recommendations from Neola. Um, a couple of adjustments that we've made since the first look. If you'll, uh, tune into the, um, policy number zero one four four dot one on compensation. Um, one revision that we made was in acknowledgement of the fact that we now have fewer. The, the number of the, the number of times we're meeting is less. Uh, we made a, a slight adjustment in the, uh, amount of, uh, compensation received per meeting. Uh, bumping that number up from thirty to forty, but the cap is still at five ninety-nine. Uh, the other adjustment that we made in that particular, um, uh, policy was, uh, adjusting the housing allowance up. From two hundred dollars per night to two hundred and fifty dollars per night, and that's just a reflection of increases in overnight. Uh, expenses if it is the case that a board member does go to a complex. So those are the two adjustments to that particular policy, uh, the only other one, um, that we, uh, made a slight adjustment to was. Um. Policy recommendation eight zero, or I'm sorry, eight eight zero five. Flags and displays. And the, um, information initially under G and H. Um, the second box was not selected, only the first box was selected, this is new policy language from Neola. And in consultation with President Reed today, uh, we thought that there might be some life in checking that second box as well. And putting some parameters around that piece in G and H. Uh, in which to say flags of countries representing our foreign exchange. Students may be placed in locations as approved by the superintendent. Similarly, in H, displays representing student organizations and clubs. Uh, may display flags, yeah, which may be placed in locations as approved by the superintendent. Just to give a little bit more structure and format to those two, uh, items in this new policy. Initially, we've left it open because you could list. Uh, spaces in, you know. Forever, uh, but this gives us some fluidity, but it also gives us some, some restriction as well. Other than that, the policy, uh, the language is as you, uh, had the opportunity to review it, uh, for the last six weeks.
Um, when we get to the action part, does anybody have any feeling about any one, if I were to call them all to be approved as presented? Or does anybody just before we get there? Time saver. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
And we will move forward to the food services expenditure update with Marty.
Alright, so, and on the heels of the financial statement audit, we submit all of our, uh, financial data to the states due annually on November first. Part of that information that we submit relates to food service program, um, and. Uh, this year, I, I assume we were in the same situation last year, we've, um, built up a fund balance to a level that we essentially have more fund balance. Than what the, uh, M D E will allow a food service program to, uh, continue to carry. So we have to do what is called a spend down plan for excess fund balance. Um, so what I presented, I attached some information on excess, uh, fund balance if you'd like to dig into it a little bit deeper, but. The main thing I want to cover is some, uh, proposed, uh, expenditures for our spend down plan. Two of the items we have already encumbered, we have issued purchase orders for their. Two of the items we have already encumbered, we have issued purchase orders for, they were actually part of our spend down plan last year, but due to supply chain issue, everything was not delivered prior to June, June thirtieth. So it will actually be an expenditure this year. So the first two items would be the high school serving line and then a high school oven. So almost a total of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And I suppose I jumped ahead, our excess fund balance was calculated at June thirtieth of being three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So essentially, that's your, take your annual total expenditure, divide that by nine, multiply that by three, compare that to what your fund balance is, and that's how you calculate what your excess fund balance is. So ours is three hundred and fifty-four thousand. So currently, we have encumbered two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that will apply towards that spend down plan. I met with Holly Haywood last week and to kind of brainstorm some ideas of how we can address that remaining balance. One thing that is an allowable expense would be, we can, the district can cover the costs to serve universally free breakfast to all students. I know we've talked about what are some ways that we can feed all of our students. This is one way we can feed our, sort of at least practice to all of our students. For lunch, we can't quite get to universal, but what we can do is eliminate, we can cover the costs for our reduced population. So we have the universally free population and then the reduced, the district can cover the reduced. So essentially, anybody that qualifies for free or reduced will get lunch one hundred percent free. So those are two of the items that we can use from this excess fund balance to cover the cost of. Other items, Holly mentioned we need a new oven in Cedar View. So she projected rough estimate of fifteen thousand dollars for that oven. The universal free breakfast, she estimating at just under twenty-two thousand. That number can go up and down based on meals served, but that's based on our current, what we're currently serving right now. The reduce, eliminating reduced lunch is actually quite inexpensive, estimated to be about forty-four hundred dollars. Because that's really, they only, that's covering forty cents per meal, third, for lunch, for lunch. Some other ideas, backup generators for our freezers. This one we would do in conjunction with, we work with GMV and Triangle to come up with estimates and plans for those. But that also might be part of the bond work if we're putting backup, I know we were talking about a backup generator for Red Hawk. So if we're doing it through the bond for the entire program, we wouldn't, you know, obviously install a second generator just for a freezer. So that's one option. Also some cafeteria furniture for the high school. Holly estimates that could be upwards to a hundred thousand dollars as well. And then the final thing we discussed was potentially charging some indirect costs to the food service program. We can charge twelve point five four percent indirect costs, and that's based on personnel costs. And indirect costs would essentially be recognizing that I spend time working on food service. Russell spends time on food service, Barb and Natalie, everybody who is involved with it, but not directly, you know. We're not working side by side with Holly and her team, but we do spend top portions of our day, you know, leading that program. So that is where we're, kind of the direction we're looking at going. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts to that, provide some additional guidance. I did include a, have a two pager that shows what are some of the pre-approved equipment items that we can purchase. Don't need to get approval from the state. Some of the things you do need to get prior approval from the state if you want to report. But there's a whole list there of things that they've already given the green light on.
I'm really happy to see the free breakfast, and I'm happy to see the reduced lunch. My question is, how do we, how does the cafeteria know? Is that just something they swipe their card like all the other kids and just, it doesn't charge them or like they're not singled out in any way? Other people can't tell who is reduced? I'm very happy with the direction that's going.
Yeah, I really like that as well.
But we do still have, there are fewer, as students get older, unfortunately, we have fewer students who participate in the, in the free and reduced lunch application process. And it's just, it's an unfortunate byproduct, I guess, maybe of that development that occurs. It's unfortunate. But maybe as, you know, students do find out about more opportunities, they can encourage their parents to engage and do, you know, participate in the, in the program. Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, yeah, earlier we discussed some concern that we wouldn't be capturing all of the families that are eligible. I think the district has done a good job of promoting the free and reduced application. I saw the numbers earlier today. Starting to pick back up to where we were prior to the pandemic. That, that's promising, but I wouldn't be able to say that we're capturing one hundred percent of our eligible students. Honestly, that would be the goal.
So how does the free breakfast program work? Do they scan for the breakfast tours or they don't have to, everybody just walks in? I'm just wondering, how do we get accounts so we can?
Yeah, they still have to scan and take meal accounts.
Perfect.
Because we will then submit our meal accounts to the state for reimbursement.
Yep, excellent.
Looking through that list that you gave us, I'm seeing the farm to school and school to gardens. Is that something we've tried to collaborate at all with, that program?
That I'd have to look into. I believe we have done it a little bit. Next, I want, as Stacy and Jen are saying, we have, I want to say that last year we received some funds to procure local produce.
Yeah, it looks like there's some equipment potential listed on there. I don't know if they need anything or not, but having that coordination.
Yeah.
Having food that is grown by students, eaten by students is appealing for sure.
Any further questions?
If I could, I'm just looking at the report of the, of the fund balance. So the fund balance at the end of twenty twenty-two was nine hundred and thirty-four thousand. But we hadn't spent some yet because it was still, there's supply, supply chain issues, so on and so forth. So does that, does that number consider that two hundred and fifteen thousand already taken out?
No.
It doesn't?
That two hundred and fifteen is included in that nine hundred and thirty-four thousand. Because as of June thirtieth, we had not received invoices for those. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And this excess fund has to be spent every two years. This is the second year, right?
It's annually, so in January, we will, we will receive a notice from the state saying you have excess fund balance. Please submit a spend down plan. You have until June thirtieth to spend it. But part of the application is you can request a twelve month extension. So we'll have until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four essentially to spend this money. And a lot of districts are having, the pandemic kind of pushed a lot of food service programs into excess fund balance situations because it was universal free. The reimbursement rate was much higher than the regular reimbursement rate. So we're universally free breakfast and lunch. So at one point I calculated when I was as part of, we'd serve a million meals and getting reimbursed for it all at a higher rate than normal. So that really kind of increased that fund balance, but they did not change the calculation. Isn't really, most of the food service programs at that point were operating in twelve months. They're operating year round, not just for nine months, so.
So one question on the table build back of the time that people are working on this. Is there enough money to allow for that time that you, you and your staff or however that works? So it doesn't take away from the things that we need?
That's just what, you're not obligated to essentially recognize the indirect cost. But we could, but we're not obligated to capture it, essentially what you're waiving the indirect.
My interest was as long as they were from the objectives we wanted to meet. If they're still there, why leave it on table? Any others?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the portion of our meeting for public comments. And it's a time for you to address the board for three minutes. And do we have any tickets for public comment this evening?
Shell is our only public.
Having none, we'll close public comment and we'll move on to our action items. And our first action item listed, we have a cross off for this evening because we do not need that student listening to meetings, so we're grateful for that. And we go to our action item B, and I'm going to call it all as one. And so if you don't see anything clearly we might need discussion for. So I would entertain a motion for the Fall 2022 Neola Board Policy for Education Policy Updates as presented in items one through fifteen.
Support?
Any discussion? Having none. Vice President Shoffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide?
Yes.
Justice Rebar?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed, yes. New House, New House is approved as presented. And that brings us to the communication portion of our meeting. And we have Shannon that's going to be sharing a piece that she got from M A F B.
Yeah, I got those thoughts together that I talked about. So I was there three days. This is going to be a super, super short summary of what happened in those three days. But the first day I took a couple classes. CBA two sixty-four was about working with the public and getting out good news and making sure we're seeking out alternative information, not just the vocal people who come to the board meetings. And it encouraged us to find influencers in the community and team up with them, find that common ground and try to earn the trust of the public. And they actually use that as an acronym, trust. So T is for truth and transparency. R is for relationships with stakeholders. U is understanding through involvement. S is shared vision through dialogue and T is two-way communication. So that was what I got out of that class. Then I took CBA two, two, six, which was exercising political judgment. And it talked about how we all have different skills and we should use those differing skills to help benefit the district. They narrowed them down to the skills of setting an agenda, networking, mapping political terrain, and bargaining. And then they had a whole bunch of information about each of those, which if you want more information on that, I can give it to you, but not right now. And this was the class where they encouraged us to rotate the first person to vote and randomize the order in which we vote. So and then one thing I wrote down on there is trust is the blue that holds. Oh, I'm sorry, we looked at different strategies to solve problems. And then trust is the blue that holds things together. So they really pushed on trust in those two, those two classes. So trust with each other, trust with the community, the community trusts with us, all that fun stuff. So that was the first thing. So then I went to a breakout section, communication through conflict. And the biggest thing with that was they had an acronym PALS. So when you're having a conflict, pause, ask for clarification. Listen, listen to hear rather than to respond. And then speak once you understand what you're listening to. And I thought that was really cool, especially the pause part. That's something I have trouble with sometimes. Okay. We, I went to one called Academic Success Through an Equity Lens. And I didn't write down a lot about that, except there was a book that a school board had read together with their superintendent. Like the book club where we'd read, you'd read a chapter and then you talk about it. But it was called Culture Proficiency, A Manual for School Leaders. And I thought that was interesting that we might consider that. And they also mentioned that in Michigan, there's a company called Midwestern Plains Equity Assistance Center. And it's free and they can come and do, use an equity rubric, looking at your district. I'm not sure if they just give you the rubric or if they actually go through and, and put your school into it, but I thought that would be interesting to see kind of where we are with that. And then I went to a breakout section that was about LGBTQ plus students. And it asked the questions, are we collecting school climate data? And if we are, can we see it? Just how students feel, if they feel safe, if they feel secure, if they feel, you know, good about being students here. It talked about having a policy regarding sex ed, requiring the information used to be medically and scientifically accurate to have that as an actual policy in our, in our documents, which I think could be good. That's not a personal thing, no. Oh, they, they said it would be nice to have a single shot of what we teach for sex ed, just like highlights for, for parents. This is what's gonna, what your kids are gonna learn about, like one page, boom, that would be a nice thing to be able to hand to them rather than expecting them to go through our entire curriculum. And then there was some other policies I printed out from Saline. That's what this, this is in front of you. They have a policy that involves making sure that all of our students are being treated equally within our schools. And they have a policy that's specific to protecting our transgender and non-binary students. And that one is very, very long. So I'm obviously not bringing this up for a vote or anything right now, but if you could give it a look. I don't know that we need to put it into policy or I just want to get a discussion started about it, I guess. Where we're thinking about that, because we do have students who are non-binary and transgender. And they deserve to have the same education as everyone else and to feel safe and cared for here. They also talked about making sure our bullying policy includes sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression as far as not being bullied for. Our bullying policy does include a sexual orientation. It does not include the gender, specifically gender expression and gender identity. And then there is also an anti-harassment policy that we have that doesn't include any of those three. So I would hope that we would take a look at those. And that is the end of my spiel.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for allowing me to go to that, because I also, beyond learning all this stuff, I connected with a lot of school board members around the state. And it was a great, it was great fun, but also great to hear what's happening at other schools and being able to connect with people on that.
I took notes of some of what you shared.
Thank you. And thank you for going to it. That's, that's not leaving the kiddos behind.
Oh, it's super easy.
Met, want to help you too. Right, that's the end of our communication piece. And so we go to the spot.
Yeah, so it's funny that Shannon asked about student surveys. So we're in the process of collecting data points for our students, from our staff, with our parents. There are Flight Plan two point O, which will take off next summer. Yes, that was fun and it was intended. But to date, as of this morning at eight forty-five ish, we've had four thousand one hundred and forty-seven surveys submitted. And that blew me away because the last time we
And that blew me away because the last time we did this work, we had, we worked with twenty-six hundred, uh, survey responses. So we've had twenty-six sixty-five, uh, two thousand six hundred and sixty-five surveys submitted from parents. Uh, we've had one hundred and twenty surveys submitted from staff, seven hundred and thirty-six surveys submitted from, uh, students in grades nine through twelve, and six hundred and twenty-six surveys submitted, uh, from our students' grades six through eight. So I think, you know, we're really getting a significant collection of voices that will help us identify areas in which we can continue to grow, um, over the next three years. So it's really exciting.
Are those sent to emails?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yes, yes. Because I'll tell my kids to open it.
Yeah, and we'll, and we'll be sending out, yeah, because students do email.
Shannon, they all filled them out on Friday during their half day. They had ninety-five candidates to do that.
Oh, okay.
So there's a teacher and some directions, which is why our student numbers are higher.
Perfect. I think that's great.
Okay, okay. I know we had a little bit of a hiccup with, um, the survey wouldn't, uh, our firewall was being too protective. And so when we were trying to hit go, uh, the survey wouldn't open, but the tech team swooped in and, uh, and cleared the path so we could, we could take off, um, as planned. And so just really exciting to dig into the data that comes from these surveys. Um, and much of, you know, as you saw from the questions that I, uh, shared, um, via, uh, Red Hawk Weekly, I think. Um, you know, the questions in there do, do ask students about how they feel in their school. Um, so I'm excited and, and those results should be, uh, coming in. Uh, we're expecting results mid-Jul- mid-January, uh, from Jeff Gardner and Associates. So we'll share those, uh, with some summaries as soon as we get them. So now I'll, I'll turn it over to Jen, uh, and then we can turn it over to Ron and anyone else that has anything they want to share, uh, for the meeting.
So just an update, um, on December sixteen, our next half day, I will be meeting with the high school English department around a couple of updates we've made in the books process. Those two very small things, one of them, we've added the word mature content to the letter that we send home to parents, not just, um, content, so mature content. And then in addition, we've added, um, the caveat, and I'll work with them for this on if they'd like to change any of the wording in the product that goes home to parents, but they run it through their principal first. Um, they have been working on the PLC on developing that and sending out something in need soon, uh, from an understanding. But I'll have some more time with them in December to update them on those two small changes. Thank you.
And Mr. Beardawg, any update on Friday morning?
Yes, Friday morning's college career and life readiness, or career college and life readiness expo. Uh, was a huge success as you heard, um, especially given that it fell on Veterans Day. And, uh, there were quite a few of the agencies that were not able to make it because of those of state federal and county. So we invited over one hundred, uh, businesses and agencies from the greater Cedar Springs area. Uh, twenty-seven of them signed up to be there and twenty-five were represented that morning. Uh, the colleges that were thirteen sign up and ten were represented that day. Um, several of those were from technical schools and some of the colleges had already done their college visits to the high school, during college half week and all that. So these were some additional ones. Uh, I want to make sure that I emphasize too that it takes a team to put this all together. And I want to thank especially, uh, Mr. Solaji for working on getting the colleges, uh, portion of it all put together. But also Mrs. Cooley and Mrs. Sebel as the three of them and myself sit down with the high school admin team, um, to really look at how we can utilize these half days that we have and, and committing a portion of each one of those half days to have some college, um, readiness and exposure. And so when mapping all that out, that's why we had to have this on the eleventh because of what we want to do the three main times of the school year. It was also an opportunity, uh, in putting this together as well that one, I was able to learn that we really in Northern Kent County don't have a great list put together of all the businesses and agencies. Um, I want to thank, uh, Stacy Bosco and her team for providing a list of agencies that they have. Um, thank the Chamber of Commerce for getting involved as well. They had the best, uh, points of contact. Even though most of them were retail and, uh, several of them were not able to come. But they communicate back their support, um, and the reason why they couldn't come is they don't have enough help to be able to keep the retail running to come to the event. They'd actually had to shut it down for the day to come. So, um, I also, you know, went a lot of door-to-door, um, introducing myself, getting out the information about what, um, we're trying to do in this expo, that it's a career awareness opportunity to hear, um, about career pathways that there are, how these individuals got to where they were at. I get really stressed upon those, um, individuals that came. Not only list out all the different jobs that are available within your organization, because sometimes people hold, um, presumptions as to, you know, what of those jobs are this and I'm not interested in that, where they could list out all those components. But also to share their own life stories and how they got from A to B or C or D or further down. You know, when they left high school, what they thought they'd do and how they got to where they are today. I want to thank Holly Haywood for, uh, the food service department did a great job, uh, providing food for that day. Uh, we invited all of the ex-learners to come to the cafeteria for lunch. I was able to share some more information about the post, um, secondary success position and some of the, uh, initiatives that we are trying to put forth, with work-based learning opportunities, job sharing, being the guest speaker, coming to help do interviews, mock interviews potentially, or even presenting a problem or practice within your business that you think, um, within our curriculum, we could find a spot for students to get engaged in, in classroom as well, um, to help solve that and follow through on that process. Well, I think the major staff were helping with the tables, chairs and the setup along with, um, some of the coaches that were there after school that needed the gym to help condition, um, some of the teams that took care of finishing it up. Also, uh, our six student ambassadors from the high school, Savannah Mayke, uh, Nathan Van Kampen, Izzy Pickelman, uh, Addison Oga, Eddie Green Lake and Addison Wood were ambassadors that day. So, um, after meeting with them and kind of problem solving what we would do as an ambassador in that time, that morning when the registration opened up at seven o'clock, they handled it from there on and made sure every vendor felt very comfortable, um, knowing where the bathrooms are, the treats, uh, or snacks and all that, and just taking care of any needs that they have. And then also barred us with the exhibitor badges, um, and make sure that not everybody else is here with a handwritten down. But this is right, uh, we are also going to have a bit of a follow-up to this on April fourth first. We will actually have an opportunity to invite, um, all these folks back again to do an actual job, interview or job fair opportunity for all of our graduating seniors or soon to be graduating seniors. And then any students who are looking for summer jobs.
Okay.
And so that'll be a tie-in for them there. Um, I've heard that from many of them, there's folks, uh, that very day at the lunch that let me know of students that they were very impressed with, that they wanted to continue to follow up with either with a work-based learning opportunity or potentially hiring, um, for after-school time. So all in all, a wonderful, successful event. And then it takes a lot of people to put that together and make sure that I recognize those individuals that have assisted in it.
Bravo.
Thank you.
Was that something that the students were required to go to or did they have the choice?
Yeah, it was part of their four-day, four, uh, piece of rotation they have on that day. So they were able to come down and, uh, they're also given, provided a, um, list of potential questions, like if they were struggling with, uh, question prompts. Both for colleges and then for a side of the paper for the actual businesses that were present. And then they had been presented a week before, at least at that point, everyone who knew at that time was going to be there. There's probably six or seven more added in that last week that, you know, if they went back to going, if they looked it up, if they would have seen that. But we wanted to give them some credit and we did some research on it. And we sent out a survey today to get some feedback, not only from, uh, the vendor and all, but also, um, we'll be giving feedback, you know, to students as well as to what they'd like to see.
Fantastic. I wish they'd had that when I was in high school.
Yeah, I heard positive things about it. So me and my boys were talking about it and my oldest son finally figured out what he thinks he wants to do. So that, that was exciting.
Yeah, I think for me, um, the vision behind the work that Ron is doing, I didn't have this as a part of that vision. Um, and so this was just such an amazing, um, thing that blossomed out of that initial idea. And, um, as, as you felt the energy in the room, as you saw the depth to which the day was planned and the smoothness with which the event flowed, um, it blew me away that this was the first time we did it. You know, you would have thought that this would have been something that we've been doing for a long, long time. So hats off to Ron, hats off to the team. It was a great day.
I was happy and participated as good as.
Awesome.
Stay there, yeah.
Thank you, Ron.
Nope, good, thank you.
All right, so moving on to planning. What we have before us, we don't have any other meetings in November. Uh, our next meeting will be December twelfth, providing we don't have to have an emergency meeting or anything. And that will be Mr. Jeffrey Barnes' last meeting with us, as he'll be retiring from the floor. And as we know, um, Aiden O'Pattan has been elected with Missy Tracy and myself to continue for another four years. So I have reached out to April and talked to her and getting her more information. So she'll be joining us in January. There we have it. So with that, it is eight oh eight and we will stay in adjourned.